It's like they had flipped their understanding of the statute on its head. And it was almost like a sleight of hand trick.
Nico Thompson Yara, Defense Attorney with the Coalition for Humane
We will now call the work session meeting July 29th to order. It is three, little after three. We started a little late, but we are calling it to order at this time. Would you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance directly after the Kids at Hope pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kids at Hope, Treasure Hunters pledge. As an adult treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. You may be seated. Thank you. Okay, we're going to do some strategic planning at this time. We'll give, open it up for the superintendent to lead us in that, please.
All right. Good afternoon. It's so good to see our board members. You do have a gift on the dais, and those are your new business cards with our updated A-rated logo. So I just wanted to make sure you knew and were aware that that was what that was. And we do have a few presentations for the board today. And the first is going to be with regards to our schools kind of reimagined. I don't usually read anything into the record, but this is, this is a, an exciting initiative, and I wanted to make sure I got everything right. So I am gonna, I'm gonna kind of kick this off with a couple of comments. You know, first of all, I want to commend our employees and families that work, work and work out, attend and support St. Lucy Public Schools. Our school district earned an A rating by the state for the first time in our history. This is truly something to celebrate. We're a destination district for employees and the first choice for families in a competitive environment where parents have choice and options as to where they want their child to attend school. We are the first choice for families. I believe we are because of the commitment we have to all children. Since January, St. Lucy Public Schools has enrolled over 800 children that previously attended a charter school, a private school, or a homeschool. This is a testament to the quality of education that we provide. St. Lucy County is growing at an exponential rate. We have to continue to build schools to meet our growth challenges while reinvesting in our older communities to provide first-class educational opportunities to all students, regardless of zip code. As many of you are aware, we have just completed Legacy High School in the Tradition area to meet these growth challenges. At Legacy alone, St. Lucy Public Schools has re-enrolled over 200 students from charter schools, private schools, or homeschools. Construction will be complete at the new Western Grove K-8 school in the Tradition area for an August 2026 opening. Those investments alone are worth almost $160 million. The board's commitment has not just been in new areas of growth, but a commitment to provide identical opportunities in our older communities. Our Fort Pierce Westwood Academy will open in January of 2026 at an investment of almost $90 million. This school is identical in every way to Legacy High, with the exceptions of the varying career and technical education programs and maybe a different paint job. These investments are not just investments in our children, which is always the board's and my first priority, but they are also an investment to our future, utilizing those future considerations when determining where to build, how to build, and then building with sustainability considerations. We have to invest efficiently. We have to invest responsibly. We have to invest wisely. We have to take into account that public education is in a competitive environment where we must strive to be a family's first option. In addition, these financial investments are driving our local economy. In three years, we will have pumped approximately $250 million into local companies, local contractors, local electricians, and local businesses that support not just our new construction, but our renewal projects planned for St. Lucy County Public Schools. We must be aggressive in our efforts because no child should have to wait for a first-class education. As we approach the completion of Westwood, many in the community were suspicious that this commitment and promise would never materialize. But here we are, just a few short months away from completion. Westwood will open on time, on budget, and on schedule. A promise made, a promise kept by St. Lucy County Public Schools. So what's next? What can we do for those students that feed into Fort Pierce Westwood Academy? Don't we owe them the same opportunities afforded their older brothers and older sisters? That's the question that I posed to my staff. The answer at that time was not much. St. Lucy Public Schools was close to our borrowing limit, and the recommendation from staff was that we should not take the district further, or recommend to take the district further into debt. To further articulate our challenges, and I'm talking to moms and dads out there, we're a lot like you, just a larger scale. When folks go to buy a house, they go to a lender. The lender looks at how much you make, they look at how much you owe, then they tell you how much you can borrow. Right now, we can't borrow much. Once we pay down more of our debt, we can free up more opportunities to borrow. Since we're working on three large projects simultaneously, this aggressive build schedule puts a strain on our purse strings. For a while, we have to spend more conservatively on capital projects. Working within the confines of our budget, we sought out other opportunities to renew and reimagine our Green Zone schools, as you'll hear in the presentation today. I still said we need to do more because the board expects more, and I expect more. We have to look at our needs, what our enrollment trends will be in the next 15 years, and we have to think creatively. I charge my staff with reviewing our options and bringing back a solution. My staff then came back with what I thought was a truly unique solution opportunity that addresses the present, takes the future into account, provides for our regular education students while also considering our alternative education students' needs. This plan builds a new K-8 in the Green Zone while not taking the district further into debt, improves our operational efficiency, reduces our operational costs, and most importantly, addresses our priorities, our kids. This plan puts our children and our children's children first, while also utilizing taxpayer dollars wisely and ensuring that SLPS continues as a leader in providing educational opportunities for all families. I believe all children are capable of success. The School Board of St. Lucy Public Schools believes all children are capable of success. And I believe this plan demonstrates that our shared commitment to all students is to all students regardless of their zip codes. So I've set the table, board members. I'll let my team share with you what they shared with me months ago. Thank you. Dr. Wild?
Thank you. And, dear members and superintendent Prince, we are really excited to be here to share this proposal because we, we really are proud of who we are.
Hang on, Dr. Wild. We gotta check the mic. I know you have a lot to say, Dr. Wild. I just want to make sure that it's heard by the public.
Testing one, two.
Nope, Doug, still not working.
I think it needs to be green.
Oh, let's try that. Check.
There you go.
Check. Michelle or Craig, can you test yours?
Check, check.
Terrence is checking his in the back.
Terrence, the portable handheld mics work. Let's just bring some of those back, and let's move on.
Check, check. Check. Check.
Testing one, two.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Problem solved. When we were tasked with this problem, we were reminded that students always come first in our decision. And so we are committed to ensure that every part of this plan is going to allow our students and our teachers to be proud of the facility that they attend every day to teach and to learn. We do believe also that all of our decisions, all of our proposals reflect our beliefs. And as Dr. Prince shared earlier, we do believe that all children deserve first-class learning environments. In today's proposal, we're first going to talk about why we believe that this is important and why we believe it's needed. Why is revitalization in the Green Zone needed? What would it look like, and how could it be possible, considering the fact that we are facing financial constraints as well as rapid growth in St. Lucy County? And then what our next steps would be? We're each going to be jumping in and sharing different components of this proposal with you today. First, we all know that population growth drives new construction. We've had many workshops to talk about all of the growth happening in St. Lucy County and how we're going to keep up with it, because that is not something we have a choice about. We must provide facilities when the students are coming to join us in St. Lucy Public Schools. However, in light of our beliefs, to try to do the same in slow-growth areas and provide new facilities there while dealing with financial constraints, we decided that we would have to get bold and be very creative to come up with ways to make this a reality. As, as you're aware, Terrence O'Leary and I and others have been working with MGT Consulting to study growth patterns, to understand growth patterns, both current growth and development and future growth in St. Lucy County.
We have worked with our local cities, counties, developers, to know which areas we would need schools in. So we've been planning that for all along. In the future, to ensure that we also have enough seats for all of our students to attend St. Lucy Public Schools.
Everyone can see that the rapid growth is really in what we call the red zone, which is southwestern Port St. Lucy, in particular in the Tradition area, in the Becker Road area. That's where the most growth is. And you can see from this illustration that the growth is continuing for several years more. And there is growth countywide. It's just proportionately much faster in the red zone.
And that growth makes us one of six districts in the state that's still experiencing an increase. That's a good thing.
So let's just take a quick review of all the growth projects that we currently have. As you're aware, currently, we are building Legacy High, opening August 11th. Students will be arriving. That will be followed by opening a K-8 in Western Grove. Again, that's not the name of the school, but a K-8 school in Western Grove, which will be opening this time next year, August of 2026. In addition to that, we do see if the growth continues, that we will expect to open an additional K-8 in 2029 in the Southern Grove area, Becker area, and adding another high school, if the data shows us, in 2033 in the Wilder community. In addition, we're just showing you a quick timeline of those growth projects. Currently, Legacy, August 2025. Again, Western Grove in '26. And then currently planning for an, August 29, for a K-8 out in the Southern and Becker area. And then, if need be, a new high school in 2033 at Wilder.
You have, as a board, already showed your commitment to revitalizing the Green Zone. And as Dr. Prince shared, we are very excited to be able to open a new high school for Fort Pierce Westwood Academy in January of 2026. We are equally excited about the CA Moore conversion to a K-8 that includes a gymnasium. More on that in just a moment. Followed by Palm Point, who has been waiting for a gym for a long time. They will receive a gym in December of 2027. And then in the upper right-hand corner of this slide is the proposal that we are reviewing with you today, that we hope to receive support for. And then after that, into the future, August of 2029, we do expect to need middle school seats in the blue zone. And so that proposal would include Village Green conversion into a K-8, along with a gymnasium. And then in about 2032, we would need either the expansion of Legacy and Fort Pierce Westwood, or the addition of the school in Wilder. And here again is a graphic to show you the construction timeline. Knowing that the proposed K-8 is a very flexible graphic, we will most likely move that to the right. We're not saying that we could deliver this by August of 2028. So that, that part of the slide is, is flexible and subject to change.
So let's talk about our Green Zone revitalization, which is currently under the way in Phase One. Our commitment to the Green Zone started with the rebuild of Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. This state-of-the-art, beautiful new facility will open this upcoming school year in December of 2026. This facility will make our former alumni Panthers extremely proud.
By the way, can you go back a slide, Dr. Wild? Because I have to mention this. That's, that's not a mock-up. That's actually a picture. The paint's already on. I mean, it's moving quick.
It's beautiful. And this is the CA Moore K-8 conversion that is actually a $15 million investment in Chester A. Moore in North Fort Pierce to allow the school to expand to a K-8. And it's going to also allow us to add a gym and improve curb appeal, and also do some renovations on the inside for middle school programming that Terrence will share more about.
So busy, we've been busy this summer, obviously, especially at CA Moore, where we've repainted all the classrooms for those middle school classes, upgraded the CTE labs, made modifications to make sure it fits our middle schoolers. We raised the whiteboards, right? Going from a kindergarten, fifth grade, we raised them up to the middle school. We removed countertop. We did re-sign and had signage for all of the K-8, CA Moore, for the new school name. The new gym, which was located at Avenue I and 31st Street, was deliberate. We want to make sure that that gym's available for weekend use by the community and by our students. We added additional multi-feel middle school for flag football, soccer, sports. In addition to that, the same gym that we're putting in at the new Western Grove will be put on the campus here at CA Moore.
And we've been working with new principal Lautus, who we're very excited to have there, continuing planning, because this coming school year, 2025, '26, our sixth grade from last year rolls into seventh grade at our Chester A. Moore Academy of Success.
And as the person that supervises the student assignment office, I can tell you that we are really happy to have a K-8 model, a small K-8 model, in the Green Zone for our parents, because they have been asking for a K-8. It does afford them the possibility, if they have kids in elementary school and in middle school, to be able to have all of their children on the same schedule. And it's very helpful because it allows older children to sometimes watch younger children after school. after school or to walk them to and from school. And we are asked about that a lot in the student assignment office. So, we're really excited to say that the Green Zone is the zone that would then have every option available to students: magnet schools, pure elementaries, pure middle schools, and a small K-8 with the conversion of CA Moore.
And I'm going to talk about maximizing our revenues and why earlier Dr. Prince mentioned that we are not looking to increase our debt. Thinking about school district debt, I want you to think about your home mortgage and how you borrow to build a house. Similarly, we have the ability to borrow to build schools. But just like you, school district, we don't want to borrow money that we can't financially handle or will be difficult for us to pay back. And some of the things that went into that decision, we're looking at, what is our outstanding debt? Our outstanding debt is currently at 34.5% of our annual revenues of our 1.5 mil. Some other things are looking at charter school sharing. We are phasing, the state is phasing that in. We are currently in the third year of that phase-in of sharing our 1.5 mil with charter schools, which is at 60%. We are at the third year. So, over the next two years, we will go into 100% of our proportionate sharing of those dollars. And avoiding borrowing now will allow us flexibility for future projects related to growth and allow us to manage reductions to gross taxable values if those should happen.
And those properties we're talking about, specifically Lawnwood, St. Lucie Elementary, and Dale Cassons, for years, back even when Marty Sanders were here, has lots of, expressed a lot of interest in those properties. So, with that said, these are some of our aging properties as well. Lawnwood, built in 1960, we added on through the years. They do operate with quite a bit of inefficiencies. So, with our new buildings, that allows us with leveraging those new efficiencies with our HVAC. And in addition, it also brings in the methodologies of using technology within the classroom. These proposals would allow us to leverage our assets to be able to provide a new state-of-the-art school right next to Dan McCarty that remains in that neighborhood.
Okay, so you can see, these are the properties here that we are referring to, that Mr. O'Leary just covered. This is on the Virginia Corridor, where all the interest is. And you can see on the left is Lawnwood Elementary, and then, bottom-right is St. Lucie Elementary. And then, you have Dale Cassons Educational Center. And then, you have, up at the upper right-hand corner, is Dan McCarty Middle School currently. This proposal would be to sell the three properties of St. Lucie Elementary, Lawnwood, and Dale Cassons, move the existing Dale Cassons to the current Dan McCarty facility, and build the new K-8 adjacent to the current existing Dan McCarty, and move all of the elementary and middle-school students together to that one beautiful newly-constructed school site. With that said, Dan McCarty is a school that has had improvements over the years. It had two major renovations. I was the assistant principal there during one of them. And I can tell you, the alumni is very dedicated to that school and very proud of that school. So, we are conscious of that. We are aware that there is a lot of support, and we would involve the community in the naming of the school. We have more questions about the naming of the school than a lot of things. People want to preserve the history, and we want to do the same, and that would be our promise. In addition, the change for Dale Cassons is a major improvement for our alternative education program. That school is currently a school that houses our overage-for-grade middle-school students trying to accelerate into high school. Our students with discipline or behavior issues, it's an alternative to expulsion site, as well as an ESE cluster for some of our neediest students. However, it's currently spread over two campuses, which does create many challenges for the faculty and staff to provide the services. So, we have students over at Garden City, and we call that the Pride Academy. And then, we have students on this location, and they would be brought together and by taking over the current Dan McCarty Middle School campus, they would have an opportunity to spread out a little bit, have wonderful CTE programs, which it is our desire to provide interesting and very innovative CTE programs for those students so that they can work in our community and be successful adults once they graduate from high school. That is a real high priority for us, and this move would really allow us to do that for the first time. And it would also allow us to bring in new programming as we see needs that would help our students. And currently, the students at Dale Cassons do not have a gymnasium. This would give them space for physical education classes, for recreation, and for events when they want to host events. I want to talk for a moment, oh, before I do. We've got this slide.
So, while this current plan will take, you know, some years to put in place, earliest being 2028, we will ensure that our current students at Lawnwood, St. Lucie Elementary, and Dale Cassons would remain in their existing buildings through a lease-back program. So, we would lease that property back, and those students would remain on those campuses until the new school is ready, and then, we would make that transition. This proposal will bring a state-of-the-art model right to that same neighborhood, providing a first-class education experience, but also, not just for students, but also provide our employees a first-class facility to teach in.
So, it really does align with our desire to build a school in a slow-growth area and serve the students right there where they currently attend school. In beginning to think about this proposal, we did go out and speak to the faculties at the four affected schools so that they wouldn't read about it in the news over the summer. And in doing so, we did ask them if they had any questions. They could ask us questions there, and they could ask us questions with a survey. We did receive four questions. We wanted to share those questions with you and provide the answers. The first one was, would there be a gifted program? Assuming that came from Lawnwood, who currently hosts a gifted program for the students at Lawnwood, yes, we would continue that, and we would have the opportunity to expand it into the middle grades as well. What accommodations can be made to the Pride Campus currently at Garden City in the meantime? And, you know, we need to say that we can't invest in major improvements to that building at this time if we're phasing out the use of it for Dale Cassons, but we would be maintaining it and making sure that we address any issues that arise in the meantime while we're waiting for the new construction. How would we choose or distribute maintenance staff after a merger? And we just want to say, maintenance staff or any other staff, nobody would lose their jobs. We would ensure that they either work at the new school or at one of our other schools, and we would follow the contract language to do that, and it would happen at the time of the transition. What will the ESE program or classes be like? Will there be sensory areas with appropriate furniture and sensory items for autistic and other needed populations? And yes, we would build a facility that meets today's needs, and this rebuild would actually allow us to incorporate more best practices into the rebuild. In asking for questions, we asked for questions from the community as well. We answered those questions in meetings and elsewhere. And the one question that was sort of quietly asked was, would making this change increase or make one school with increased behavior problems or academic problems? And Dr. Summer had a great idea. Let's do a data analysis and see what we come up with. And so, we asked him to share what he learned today. And before he moves to that, I just want to share, we did provide for you just a summary slide on what we see as the benefits of this proposal for each school, not just for the whole community, because we do believe that a beautiful new school in the middle of Fort Pierce does add economic value. It adds beauty to the community. So, there's those types of benefits as well. But it also provides a facility where we're able to upgrade technology. Sometimes, it's hard to retrofit old buildings. It does provide the, all the benefits of a K-8, keeping your students together, reduce transitions. It allows for more efficient and cost-effective operations, keeps the new school where the current students currently attend in the same location. And for Dale Cassons, I did go over pretty in-depth the benefits for Dale Cassons. And, you know, we couldn't be more pleased with this proposal if it does get approved. So, now, let's move into the data that Dr. Summer has to share.
Thank you, Dr. Wild. I did want to run a few data points. I'm going to go through them with you now. If I can orientate you to the slide, this is, this first one, should we go back one? I think you just went ahead. This is the first, okay. Learning gains, which is extremely important for us to measure. This looks at how the state measures growth on an annual basis. So, on the left-hand side, you see Lawnwood Elementary is our first school. Overall, 57% of those students made a learning gain. Their bottom quartile, our most at-risk student, made a 68% of those students also made a learning gain. I plugged in St. Lucie Elementary, Dan McCarty, as you can see the numbers. I then made a weighted average. So, you see, the total for the three schools is a 57 and a 58. That would assume is that the schools were combined into one. Then, I compare that to our district average, just about equal.
Oops, sorry.
There you go. Box right around. So, our district average is almost equivalent, 59% overall learning gains and 57. This was 2025. Reading. I then want to dig a little deeper and go beyond how the state measures data and look at actual and real growth. So, the next slide looks at our growth. This actually analyzes down to each student, how many points the students earn. And if you look at, you can go straight to the bottom, the total for the three schools combined. And the points can be somewhat arbitrary, but if you just think, the average growth for the students at those three schools was 12.19 points in a year in reading. Compare that to the district average, you see the numbers lower, 8.93. So, the students at those three schools combined increased by nearly 50% more when combined to our district average. So, those that made growth or didn't hit that little state bar, that's kind of arbitrary, those schools made better growth than the rest of our district, which, by the way, had a banner year. Looking at math, we see similar trends. So, you see the three schools, Lawnwood, St. Lucie L. This looks at learning gains, again, that state model. Did the students actually earn a credit for a learning gain in the state? And it's almost identical, but a little bit higher at our three schools when you combine them. 57% overall made a learning gain, 58% in the bottom quartile when combining those three schools made a learning gain, which exceeds the district average by about three points for bottom quartile, ties it for the district average. Let's dig even deeper. Let's look at actual growth, looking at the actual points that the kids increased. Again, about 30% higher than our district average, which, by the way, exceeded the average of the state. So, the total for the three schools, the increase in math, when you combine the three schools, again, arbitrary number, just think, the kids made a 16-point gain versus our district average of 12.5, which, by the way, again, exceeded state average. So, we're very proud of that. So, how does that play into the overall environment of the school? If you look at discipline, what I did was I charted our middle and K-8s for comparison, and I looked at all the referrals and discipline incidents assigned to those schools, and I sorted them. So, if I can orientate you to this slide, this is the 2025 discipline events for our middle schools and K-8s, and I sorted them from the most to the least. And then, I highlighted for our convenience our combined three schools, okay? So, if you actually see the highlight, our combined K-8 of Dan McCarty, Lawnwood, and SLE, you see the total number of referrals is 1955. And when you compare that to our district, you see it's just slightly more than Southport Middle, slightly less than Forest Grove Middle, and sitting about at the median for our district. And then, each of the numbers that you see to the right of those total referrals, the Level 1, 2, 3, and 4, are just about proportional when it comes to the type of incidents that occurred. And this, again, is 2025 data. One slide that I can point you to is, I also pulled attendance. So, just this past school year, and I believe it's in your packet, but our attendance rate in the combined schools, unfortunately, I have that memorized, right? But it's 92% for our three combined schools, which is just at our district average. So, those are the metrics: discipline, attendance, gains, and growth. Thank you, Dr. Wild.
Okay, so as we close today, we can turn it back to Dr. Prince and see if there's any questions.
So, I want to thank the team. You know, all means all. You know, we have to make sure that we're committed to all areas of our county and all of our students. And I will say that I always believe in functioning with a sense of urgency and not waiting to act. We have an opportunity here that, you know, we can provide a new facility. We can utilize the assets that we have, and we can provide continued commitment in the Green Zone. That same commitment we've made to Westwood, the children that feed into that school or will feed into that school, I think it's a great opportunity for us to demonstrate to the community that we're committed to them. And before, you know, first of all, we're not voting on anything today. It's just I wanted to make sure if the board had any questions and if we had a consensus. You know, the only thing the board would vote on is, as we look at negotiating contracts, you know, working with folks that are interested in these assets, those moving forward would come to the board. But I wanted to get direction from the board and also see if there were any questions that we could answer and, you know, what the marching orders for the district are with regards to how the board feels about this proposal. And I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Mills.
Board members, we opened this up for discussion at this time. Anyone would like to start off with the discussion of what had been proposed this evening?
Madam Chair. I've been a proponent of this for a long, long time. By the time you add up HVAC, roofing, and a couple of other needs of those schools, you can cover the cost of it. And I firmly believe that our staff has done a great job. I'm not sure if this would be the time or opportunity, but we need to also have a workshop on how this will progress. I know this is the first step in us moving, making sure that we're all on the same page and making sure we want to go in the same direction. But, you know, how do you go about selling a property? Obviously, some of us here know, but then, the community doesn't know because that'll be the next question. But my wife was the principal at one of these schools at one time, and I can tell you, it's not adequate for children to be, it's adequate, but it's not up to the level of our other campuses. And when you're eating in a cafeteria that's been moved three times, I think it's a tragedy.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm excited about giving these students, you know, concentrated effort in state-of-the-art education. I think it's an opportunity to do something unique in this area. I know it's going to be a slow process. I think there's other opportunities to explore here. I think this is sort of the first step, but I am excited about it. I think that it is a very strong opportunity in a new learning model, a combined learning model for these students. And I hope that the general public understands that and is supportive of it.
Ms. Hawley, Ms. Richardson, did you want to add to discussion here?
I do, actually. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I am obviously supportive of this venture. But with everything, with all of this, I believe, comes questions and concerns. You know, it's not as dry or, you know, as it seems. You know, there are things that you have to overcome, obstacles, hurdles that we are going to need to overcome. And I think that looking ahead and maybe answering some of these questions and making sure that we're on the same page is important. I'm not sure I see community members here. I'm not sure what their questions are. I see our principals here, you know, and if, you know, what, you know, I've heard the concerns, if any. But for me, it's, building the school is, I think, it's a very good thing for our North District. I look at Lawnwood, I look at St. Lucie Elementary, Dan McCarty, you know, and they need some revitalization or a new school, and a new school is the better option. But again, my concern is, and which Dr. Prince mentioned was, or the questions were, you know, how are we going you know, how are we going to employ these, they are not going to be displaced. We understand that. But we have senior members of staff, you know, that are in place, in positions already. How are we going to deal with that, you know? So that would be one of, that would be my question, one of my questions. How do we deal with that, you know? And there's also the question of principalship. You know, there are so many things that needs to be, and I just want to make sure that our community knows that these are not things that we're going to take lightly. I know I'm not going to take lightly, that these are things that are definitely going to be discussed and for me, talked about, and I won't stop until, you know, that it makes sense to me. It has to make sense, you know? The other things that I have, that I'm even excited about is that we are building the school in the North area. And to me, this says not just growth for our community, but growth for economically. If you put these, then it inspires, it motivates, it will empower our community, okay? The others, and so I'm just, you know, it will bring people into the North area. It brings families, because when we are looking for schools, we are looking for, you know, good schools. We are A District, so we have good schools. So we need to look like good schools. We need to be good schools. We need to promote good schools, you know? Our schools need to say Tupperware, Apple, Google, I don't know. You know, they need to be branded. When we say Lawnwood Elementary or Dan McCarty, you know, it should be with excitement. It should be like, oh, I know Dan McCarty, I know Lawnwood, oh, those are good schools. You know, we should have to stop the thing to do review. They are good schools. So we have to brand, we have to rebrand, we have to start speaking positively about the schools. And we will do that once we have the community looking like the school. Or the school, no, the community looking like the school, you know? Somebody once told me, when I go in an area and I close my eyes at a school, I close my eyes and I open my eyes, I shouldn't wonder if I'm at Palm Point or a school in the North area. And to the superintendent's point, he said, they will all look alike. You know, Martin Luther King said, I have a dream. I have a dream that when I open, close my eyes and open my eyes, all the schools will look alike. All the schools will teach alike, all the schools will be alike. That's my dream, you know? So these are the concerns, some concerns that I have. I could go on and on about the concerns, but I do want our community to understand that, you know, we are in, we are, we have to be very competitive as a district. We are A school. And I'm sorry, this is a meeting and a workshop, and I'm going to take my time because I want our community to understand where, what my take is. I lost my train of thought, but I'll catch it, it'll catch with me in a little while. So our community needs to understand that we are here, that we are competitive, that we have other schools, you know? And so we have to, we have to come with our A game. We have to come with our A game. This, you know, it's all-out war. You know, we have to make sure that we are providing and producing a product of excellence in our community. And the only way that we can do this is that we do this as a team. And the team is not just the district parents. The team is our community. Parents, we have to, we have to, we have to stand up. You have to let your voices be heard. We need to hear from you. These are your children. What do you want? You know, there's no time to be on the sideline. We need for you to come up, show up, and I would say show out, you know? Let your voices be heard. I want to hear from you. I want to know what interests you, you know? To our superintendent's point again, he talked about, and maybe Dr. Wild about, you know, CTE and Dan McCarty and Dale Cassons, that has been a dream of Mr. Early. That has been his dream, because this is what's going to change the trajectory of our children that have a discipline problem, whatever problem, whatever the reason is that they are where they are at. I believe that this will change their trajectory. We've always wanted a gym for them. They will have a gym. Get rid of all of that excess negative energy and come back and ready to work. Come back ready, you know? Our school is supposed to be here to make our students into successful community members. That is our goal, and that's what we are supposed to be striving for. Anyway, I'm just very, very, very happy that this day is here. My question was, when will this become alive or become a reality? 2030? I'm looking forward 2028, 2030, thereabouts. You know, so we need to put a timeline on that and make sure that we stick to the timeline, okay? Promises made, promises kept, or however you just said it a while ago, you know? That we are going to, we are on a mission. We are going to accomplish our mission, and we are going to be the best district ever. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Hawley?
Dr. Mills, I do have another comment that'll probably throw everyone for... No, I'm going to make it. No, I'm going to make it. I would also propose too, if available, to sell the whole property and build somewhere else on Edwards Road, if we could get a good dollar amount. And I know the community doesn't like me on that one. I know Dan McCarty is a treasure. But in 20 or 30 years, when Troy Ingersoll is no longer here, I'd like to say I built something that lasted a little bit longer. So if that means the total destruction of that whole Sunrise area, I would not... And we got a good dollar for it. It has to be able to be cost-neutral, per se, but I would not be opposed to it.
I think Mr. Ingersoll, that the community, the Lincoln Park community would prefer to have a state-of-the-art school within their community. That would be...
Yeah.
The only problem with that, with the community, that they, that that community wants state-of-the-arts like other communities have. So moving that school further south could be a problem there.
Only reason I say that is because that's the property we own. I mean, if we had other property available, I mean, I would be open to that. But I don't want to spend more money to buy something that I already have 30 or 40 acres on Edwards Road. That's the only reason is, yeah, I would like to keep in that community too. But at the same time, there's no property except for the one that we own and other people want.
But I don't, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but I think that even though we are, we own that property, we have the ability to own the property that is in question right now. And it's not going to cost us any money, so to speak. If I understand correctly, it's just going to be traded, whatever it works, but there's no, you know...
My comment was, I just don't want to save in Dan McCarty just because, you know, it has a lot of memories. That was what I was saying. And I understand what the community's saying, and I know that people graduated high school from there. But most people weren't around when Central got destroyed, and we moved Central. You know, those memories had to get buried too. And we had a nice service for those graduates. And I remember the 1971 football team came and we honored them. And we did, your husband was there, Dr. Mills, and we did a lot of things to move it. But that's what I'm saying is, I just don't want us caged into one area if there's a buyer that wants to buy the whole area. And that was my thought.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't think it's about memories. I think it's about location. I think it needs to stay in the northern territory of the county, for sure. I think Edwards Road is too far south. And it was too far south realistically.
It's two tenths of a mile.
It's not, it's south of Virginia.
Okay.
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah.
And Madam Chair, I do believe it needs to be in the community. It needs to be in the community, community pride.
Okay. My comments is that I'm excited as well. I want to see new stuff come up in the Lincoln Park area. I want to see the growth as we are doing that now academically. But there's nothing like having a brand-new, state-of-the-art building. And when I even think of Dale Cassons, Dale Cassons needs improvement. They need to be moved out and into something that's more right there for them. So it's for all of our children from, and I appreciate your openness to give us other options and what we're saying. So, but again, as has already been said by majority of board members, if we're going to do anything, I believe we need to do it right within the community that we're in and make sure they have something that they can be proud of. I also, as chairman of this board, would like to, if there is anyone out in the audience that would like to have any comment at all, to give you that opportunity to do so at this time. I think that the presentation that our staff, our administrators did was excellent. Your presentation really put a lot of light on this project. And because of that, I think a lot of answers, a lot of questions have been answered. But I wanted to do that just to open it up to show that we care enough about any comment that may be out there. And if it is, please come up. We'll give you about three minutes to say what you need to say. You know, because many minds help with our thinking process. We're not trying to say that. We just don't want to hear anything from the community. So please, ma'am, please say your name and you got it.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for inviting us for, to give our comments. So I'm Sabrina Taylor. I'm a native of Fort Pierce and certainly a very proud graduate of the St. Lucie Public School System. So I appreciate definitely the hard work that staff has made time to consider all of the challenges, right? You know, want to make sure that we maintain our, now our A rating and making sure that we recruit not only the best and brightest as it relates to staff, but also for our future kids as well. So the question I have is twofold. So you indicated in your presentation that the schools, I think Lawnwood, Dale Cassons, and St. Lucie Elementary. So understanding that they're going to be merged, what's going to take place with those properties? And then the second part of my question is, what happens with Garden City Elementary?
So first of all, the first issue is Garden City. Our plan would be that as an asset, we would look to see if there was interest and someone wanted to purchase that property. Garden City is an antiquated facility. It costs a lot of money to run, and it's currently serving Pride, which is part of our alternative education program. Our plan is to move those students into Dale Ca, not Dale Cassons, Dan McCarty. And we would combine, right now, we have two campuses serving alternative education with limited opportunities for the children that are in those settings. And we want to place them in Dan McCarty, where Dr. Wild mentioned career and technical education programs, fields, a lot of opportunities for those students to get a first-class quality education in a much upgraded facility than the one currently at Garden City. You asked, the other part of the question was, what happens to those properties, Lawnwood, St. Lucie Elementary, and Dale Cassons? Well, that's the question we have to answer, because, you know, our goal is to see, you know, we know that in the 10 years that I've been here as a deputy superintendent, and I just completed my third year, a number of entities had approached us when Mr. Gent was superintendent, saying if we ever rebuilt on another location, let's say we did something on Edwards Road, there was an appetite that that was desirable property because it's on Virginia Avenue. So we're excited on a number of facets, because we see a real redevelopment of that area. And what a great place to put St. Lucie County Public Schools' footprint, a brand-new school in a reimagined area and a commitment to that neighborhood. And to Mr. Ingersoll's point, you know, my commitment is to build there. That's, I'm just saying, in that area. Because when we do our studies of where the population is going to be and the population density and where kids are going to need to walk to school, or if they're not walking, the proximity is close in that area, I just think it's going to be a great, desirable place for our kids to be. And I'm sorry, I'm a little giddy right now, because, you know, I heard from my board members. And, but I hope I answered your questions.
Yes, you did. Thank you for that. And if I may, I too support the comments that it should remain in that community. We know that change is difficult, but I also ask that we continue our transparency. And hopefully, once you all make your decision to determine when you're going to make that decision, that you still allow for community input as well. We know, again, that change does occur. But I think if you are communicating and transparent through that process, then we kind of mitigate some of the anxiety that we already are experiencing in the community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I say one more thing? I was going to say that, you know, we attended, Dr. Mills and Mrs. Richardson and I, attended a town hall. And we also had definitely left the invitation open that my commitment is to go back out and into the community as we, this whole process is going to be transparent. I also wanted to mention, we talked about our principals. We've got three, and by the way, we have more principals here. But our principals of those schools are here, Kathy Beish, and we got Ms. Stubbs, and I ju, oh, Ms. Nixon. I'm going to tell you, in three years from now, one of them may have my job. They are the most talented principals we have. Talk about the proximity of talent within a one-square-mile area. They are all rock stars and whoever, yeah, I mean, they're just amazing. And whoever is, ends up being the principal of that school, if it was one of those three, what a blessing for that community, because they are truly, truly wonderful educators. Sorry.
Madam Chair, I'd just like, if that's okay, one, another, I'm just going to mention briefly one of my concerns. Another concern is, I was looking at the Green Zone and the schools in the Green Zones. And to your point, Dr. Wild, about the K through 8 and, you know, the, you know, so all the schools pretty much are going to, the children are, the students are going to stay in the Green Zone based on the, based on the schools that we have. We have the middle school, whatever. We have all of those schools there in the Green Zones. I'm very, I'm concerned about some aspects of that. But my concern when it comes to the Green Zone and the feeder schools and how they, you know, feed into each other is that it is very important that we have the best of the best, be teachers, educators. We have the best of the best in that zone as well, because we have, it's a very challenging area and neighborhood. And so we need to make sure that when we do do this, even though it is there now, but we're going to kind of redesign, reimagine, that we are reimagining with the best in mind. We are going to put quality, we are going to put excellence, because all children are capable of success and all children deserves the opportunity of excellence. So that is going to definitely be one of my criterias when we start this, that we are looking and we are making sure and we are intentional about who and how it's done.
And that is how we will maintain our A. We're already doing that now. So we will just maintain our A as a district to have the best, especially in challenging schools. We need to have teachers that can handle the students as well. If that would be all out of the audience, I just, you know, we had one person come, then we will, at this time, we will turn it back over into your hands, Dr. Prince.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to establish lastly that we are going to move forward with discussions with various entities. You know, we're going to basically put it out there publicly that we're open for business. And anything, you know, of course, we can't do anything without board approval. So anything moving forward will come to the board. You know, our desire is probably moving forward every month or two months. We'll have to do an update for the board of where we're at with everything. do an update for the board of where we're at with everything so that, you know, we just keep the board appraised of what we see as a timeline for this. All I can say is my commitment is sooner, not later. That's my commitment. So with that being said, we're going to move on to Kim Albrighton. And just to give you, kind of lay a foundation here of this presentation, that this is regarding contract signature authority. Currently, the contract signature authority is $50,000. And Business Services came to me with a proposal to raise that. It was raised previously, three of you were board members, the last time it was raised in 2014, and it was, it went from $25,000 to $50,000. And just wanted to, I'm not taking away from Kim's presentation, but some of the challenges we're having with regards to inflation and also services because we're a pass-through for services and charter schools and private schools contract with us for ESE services, special education services, mental health services. There's a sense of urgency to providing those services when they're requested. And I'll let Kim, I think that teed you up pretty well, Kim, with what you guys came to me with.
Yes.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Can you guys hear me okay? This is always my problem. Yeah. How's that?
We'll let you know if we can't hear you.
I know. Okay. Good afternoon, you guys. I'm Kim Albrighton. I am here today to bring you a recommendation from our department, our finance department. This is something that we feel is going to help us to enhance our ability to meet the needs at the schools. So in order to enhance our efficiency and expedite support for our schools, we want them to be able to focus on students. We want to bring forward a request to increase our signature authority. It was last changed in 2014, as Dr. Prince had mentioned. We went from $25,000 to $50,000, essentially doubling it. Our current proposal is to do the same. We'd like to take it from $50,000 to $100,000. And at the same time, we're also asking to increase our quote threshold, which is our lowest threshold, from $8,000 to $10,000, which that would allow us to match what is the current federal quote threshold. These changes are going to allow us to service schools and meet their needs faster, essentially because costs have risen so much. Moving the increased signature authority does not reduce our obligation to transparency or policy compliance. All contracts, no matter the dollar amount, are subject to audit review. The finance department is very proud of our recent zero-finding financial audit. Signature authority is a designation to a person within the district who can bind the organization and contracts. The designation establishes accountability and prevents ambiguity within contracts. As mentioned previously, our current authority is $50,000, and we're proposing to double the authority in order to reduce project delays and align the limit with school operational Our district has seen tremendous growth since 2014 with over 15,000 additional FTE. As our district grows, our contract needs grow as well. This includes, as previously mentioned, our ESE and mental health services contracts. And not only these contracts provide services to our district schools, but they also provide services to private and our charter schools as well. Some of these service contracts require a sense of urgency in order for us to establish and provide services to our students. So authorizing the higher signature authority is going to enable us to act quicker, support schools and students, reduce lead times and costs. Advantages to the schools would be streamlined processes to implement our services, allowing our leadership to focus on their strategic priorities and reducing barriers to school Again, with the rising cost to support our students and provide services, and we've seen record inflation in the years after the COVID pandemic, other agencies have made similar increases to these thresholds. The Florida Legislature increased their cap on continuing services contracts 275% since 2019. Federal regulations have increased their thresholds by 150%. So the proposed changes will align with policy changes to meet our school operational needs. Other peer districts have made similar changes, increasing from $100,000 to $250,000 in signature authorities. On this slide, I've presented some of the Florida districts that have raised their signature authority due to increased costs of services. I've listed each district and their corresponding current enrollment. In summary, we ask the board to revise the limits as presented to align with local and federal trends, which in turn will empower us to meet school needs at a faster pace, but allow the board to retain signature authority on contracts over $100,000. Any questions?
May I, Madam Chair, may I make a comment? Thank you. So when Business Services came to me with this and we looked at other districts, some of the other districts go up to $250,000. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you. I don't feel comfortable with that. They, it was, it went from 25 to 50. These are questions I asked when they came to me with this. So in 2014, the board, three of you were on that board, it went from 25 to 50,000. And they recommended from 50,000 to 100,000 to kind of keep the same pattern. And some districts went more than that. But I do think from an accountability standpoint, that 100,000, that should be our threshold because that would still come to the board. And clearly, the board can always ask for any information. We're very transparent in everything that we do. But I feel, I feel comfortable. In addition, I'm going to compliment Business Services for last year's perfect financial audit, which is extremely rare for a district to have. But if the board, if there's a consensus of the board to permit this, it does have to go through policy review. It would go through the policy review committee. We'd have to draft policy language. And it would still take a few months to take into effect until the board ratified the policy. And then we would, we would implement that, implement this moving forward. It's up to the board's discretion.
Any comments or discussion with this?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, you need a vote to send this to policy? What are you asking for?
No, I'm just, I'd just like to hear from the board members, you know, what their thoughts, or if they have any questions, you know, to get a sense if the board wants to move in this direction, then we'll develop policy to mirror that desire of the board. And it's really about providing customer service and providing specifically special education and mental health services to students because we only have one regular board meeting per month. So we have to sometimes wait until that meeting. And this would decrease our backlog, increase efficiency. And it's been 11 years since we did this last, so it's, it would be my recommendation.
And then you would bring it back to us for a vote?
That's correct.
I'm comfortable having policies comparable to other jurisdictions of our size and with a department with an impeccable record.
Madam Chair, I know when I did this last time, I didn't mind it, and this time I don't mind it, but this time I want to do something a little bit different. If we, if we could, because when the board did this, we don't have any way of finding out what we, what contracts are approved. I would like, for accountability and transparency, I would like to also have it on the agenda maybe a month later with the ability to see not a voting item, but an informational item, so that we can see what the superintendent did sign. Does that make sense? Because I know there were some contracts that had been signed, and they were like, oh, I didn't know that. And they're like, well, it didn't hit the, I hear, oh, it didn't mean $50,000, so we didn't have to tell you. And it wasn't like that, but that's how it comes out. So now I have the teeth to be able to do it, saying, okay, you want the $100,000 limit, go ahead and just put it on the next agenda, sign it, do your business, do whatever. Let's don't slow down progress, but let's go ahead and be transparent.
Good suggestion.
Yep. And that's easy. We can just provide as part of our informational reports, which we provide the board every month.
I actually agree with that as well. I concur because they, there are things that I see after the fact that I didn't know, you know, so I do concur.
Madam Chair? Just to add in that I am fully supportive of that, $100,000, we're probably going to find limits on that as we get into it and prices keep continuing. But I think that it definitely will improve the efficiency of our finance department. And just to add my caduce as well for an impeccable audit, and never, ever have I questioned the integrity of our finance department. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albrighton. All right. Speaking of Business Services, they're the stars of the show. So at this time, our chief financial officer, Michelle Thomas, is going to do an internal auditor presentation. So there is a law that was recently passed that indicates, and she'll go over the statute, that annual revenues of $500 million or more must employ an internal auditor. And this presentation is basically going to be about our recommendation of how to move forward with that. And that's either having a direct hire, which is basically a staff member of St. Lucie County Public Schools, or hiring an external, external contract auditor, an outside firm. And Michelle's going to go through that.
It's me again. This presentation will discuss the process and best practices for the internal auditor selection. Florida Statute 1001.42 states that any school district receiving annual revenues in excess of $500 million shall employ an internal auditor. And the statute, in this statute, it goes over the requirements and the scope of work that's necessary for the auditor to conduct and the legal obligations as well. There are essentially two options that we can utilize in obtaining an internal auditor. One, we can do a direct hire. That position would work for the board, report directly to the board. Or we can hire an external firm under an external contract. My recommendation is that we engage with an external firm. There are several reasons why I'm recommending this. I believe they are free from biases, and that can allow them to be more objective and thorough. And this is based on my experience in dealing with external firm and auditors in throughout my career. They have a specialized expertise, which allows them to analyze complex regulations. And in my opinion, I believe this will be more cost-effective as well. This is the auditor selection process timeline. What our expectation is, is that we are presenting today and that you would recommend committee members. We will move on to solicit participation. The board would then formally approve the committee roster during a public meeting sometime in August. And then in September, we would start the RFP process. This outlines the legal guidance and expectations of the committee members, and I want to point out the three items in the composition because those are really, really important. There must be a minimum of three members on this committee. One must be a board member, and that member would serve as the chair of the committee. There are no district employees that are allowed to participate with this committee. Now, committee members should have some governmental auditing knowledge, some financial knowledge. And if they need to seek any guidance, they can reach out to my department, and we will be glad to assist them in any way. This is the step-by-step process in how I want to move forward with this selection. So the August 12th meeting, I would like the board to appoint a committee member to serve as chair. And I want to really emphasize, this is a commitment. This is a timely commitment as well. A lot of time is involved in this. And we want to share that with the committee members and as we select those committee members as well because they are volunteering their time, and it is a lot of time as far as commitment. So once we select the committee chair, we will recommend at least two qualified candidates. I will then reach out and send out an invitation. Once they accept that invitation, the board approves those committee members at a board meeting. And then once the board approves those committee members, we move forward with the RFP process. Any questions?
Just a quick clarification for the board, a couple of clarifications. First of all, it would be my strong recommendation that the board go with an external auditor. And I'll just explain my rationale of why that would be my recommendation, and I share that recommendation with Michelle, is that my goal, number one, I serve the board, but also one of my priorities is to protect the board. And I believe by having an external auditor, it, there's no bias involved. Somebody from the exterior comes in, they don't work for us, you know, they don't report to us, and it's, I just think it's a more transparent way of doing business, and that would, that would be my suggestion. But I serve at the leisure of the board, and, you know, I need a consensus of the board if we want to move forward with an external rather than internal auditor.
Board members, anyone want to comment or discussion?
Madam Chair, I have extensive experience with auditors, both with my newspaper background and obviously at a nonprofit. I would recommend a third-party, you know, auditor as well. They do somewhat work for you because you can choose another one, just so you know. However, you will get a little less bias by not having them as an employee. So I do agree. And honestly, as Michelle mentioned, it is more cost-effective to have them as a non-employee. So I definitely would recommend a third party.
So the question is, and I do agree with you on that myself, as having a nonprofit for many years.
Yeah, we've all have experience in that.
External is much the better way to go. Just having that experience and knowing that you're going to get something that isn't unbiased completely, you know, on that level. But also, you mentioned something else after that. What was the next other comment you mentioned? I wanted to say something.
It is typically a little bit more cost-effective to go with a third party than an employee.
Yes, that was, why? Why? We want to know why it's more cost-effective than having internal auditing.
Well, in my experience, especially with this kind of situation, right now, we may need to employ one or two people if we do a direct hire. We would then be determining salaries and benefits and where these, housing these employees, space, holding up space for them, where we don't have those costs with an external auditor as well. And there's no question as to how many staff members we would need. This is a new position that we would be engaging with for the district in terms of that. So there's a lot of learning involved as well. I have done some research. There's not a lot of information out there because not every school district utilizes this concept because they don't exceed 500 in annual revenues. So it's only required if you exceed 500 in annual revenues. Looking at some other school districts, their contracts do show that their costs are less than an employee of an administrative level.
An employee being here every day type thing?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Any more discussion on this? Seeing none.
All right. So moving forward, we'll bring this to the board in August. And in August, you will select your representative, and I'm sure Mr. Cole can provide some guidance on that as well with this, you know, the selection process. So, Madam Chair, our next presentation is not until 5:01 PM.
That's right. So at this time, we are going to adjourn to meet back here at 5 o'clock so we can go right into our next board meeting. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.